All right, I will bring this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to all with a routine and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here this evening. No guests, so I'll move right along. This is the point in the meeting for comments on matters not already on the agenda. Comments on agenda items will be accepted when that item comes up during the meeting. Interested persons may also submit the use in written form to the clerk or superintendent during the meeting. Those comments will be brought to attention by the board during the meeting. Do I have any correspondence or public participation? Okay, let me move right into your business. Mr. O.
Okay, I'm still booting up here.
Okay.
I'm in trouble with my other laptop. So, I'm gonna keep going there, just gonna take turns. Okay, so I have recommendations for the admin staff. We would be recommending Alicia O'Toole for middle school principal, Robin Nansel, high school principal, Bart Bailey, elementary school principal, Derek Kirchner, supervisor of curriculum instruction, Jennifer Arneson, special education director, and Robert Whitehead, maintenance director.
All these, all together or one at a time?
I think we've always done them one at a time.
That's fine with me.
Okay. I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Alicia O'Toole for middle school principal for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, welcome back. I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Robin Nansel for high school principal for the 2526 school year.
Second.
I heard Tiff.
You gotta be louder, Angie.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Go ahead.
I ask the position to be open.
Any other?
Sorry, what was?
She asked for the position to be open.
Be open.
Oh, okay. Any other comment?
Just as a staffer of the high school, we really appreciate Robin, and she's working really closely to make my turn to leave as seamless as possible this sort of next year. So.
Anything else? Any further board? I have no comment. What's that, I'll go to the vote. Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Bart Bailey, elementary school principal, for the 2526 school year.
Second.
I got Tiff on there again.
Look, see, you have to be louder.
I have a motion and second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Derek Kirchner, supervisor of curriculum instruction, for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Jennifer Arneson, special education director, for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Robert Whitehead, maintenance director, for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Any further, or any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye. Perfect.
Again. Okay, we've got a proposal here to renew or to not renew our membership with the Montana School Boards Association.
And this year, I think they said the dues went down, right? Seven thousand five hundred dollars.
I couldn't find last year's in the minutes, but I found the prior three years and they like ticked up just a hundred bucks for each one. So I was just assuming that it went up a hundred and fifty or so, but maybe it went down, but.
It was supposed to go down.
Yeah. They sent an email and said it.
Yeah.
This one just was the invoice that was attached.
Okay. I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees renew its membership services with MTSBA for the 2526 school year.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board?
We definitely get our money's worth.
I agree. Who made that second? Tiff?
Uh, no, Angie did.
Angie did? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, looks like we have a, I don't know.
I thought that, I asked for this one earlier, yeah. So we got an email from MTSBA for the annual membership survey, and it wants us to complete it as a board collectively. So, I mean, do you guys want me to just read it? We can hear it as we go? Okay, so I'll put, the survey was completed as a joint project by the Board of Trustees. We are a Class B school. How long have we participated in MTSBA's programs and services? Brittany?
Oh, I have no idea.
Ten to fifteen years? Five to ten? Fifteen plus? Zero?
I'd say at least ten. Since I've been here, right? Or fifteen plus. Fifteen plus.
All right, now we need to answer these as extremely satisfied, satisfied, dissatisfied, extremely dissatisfied, or unknown, not applicable. Okay. MTSBA's statewide trainings, back-to-school legal primer, 504 IDEA, HR symposium, budget symposium, April hot employment topic, and it just lists all theirs. Are you guys satisfied with their training programs?
I like them.
I like them.
I.
Okay. Extremely satisfied or satisfied?
I mean, I think there's always room improvement.
I agree.
In district customized trainings. We'll keep them overdone. Oh, we have.
We live in Denver. Yeah. Satisfied.
Okay. MTSBA's lead and learn webinars, including the newly elected trustee video series.
I liked that when I was.
I did too.
They're easy to go through.
It was, it was good.
I'm satisfied.
Okay. MTSBA publications, daily dispatch, question of the month.
I like those.
I really like those, yeah. Those are really informative.
MTSBA's advocacy and engagement opportunities, Think Tank Thursdays, delegate assembly.
Yep.
MTSBA's website and connect to communities. And.
I don't know.
I.
Use those.
I don't use that.
I always go on their website.
Do you?
To look up like model policies and stuff.
No.
Oh, yeah. I've tried looking it up and I can't ever figure it out.
I look at our policies though.
Model policies. I'd say satisfied though.
Yeah.
MTSBA's legal services.
Very satisfied.
Extremely satisfied.
Extremely satisfied.
MTSBA's labor services.
Yep.
Policy services.
Yes.
Strategic planning services.
Yes.
Superintendent search services.
Yes.
Dissatisfied.
Extremely.
As long as you can joke about it.
MSGIA worker compensation program. Do we love that?
Red light, yes.
Mm-hmm. She loves it, okay. Property and casualty program. Unemployment insurance program. Health insurance, must health insurance, we don't use that.
No.
MCAL annual conference.
I didn't go this year, but I've heard good things about it.
MCAL.org?
I have. No, not yet.
NA?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. The Coalition of Advocates for Montana's Public Schools, the great works of Montana's Public Schools, Coalition MTK12Advocates.org.
Me either, I've never.
Anything else? Okay. Strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, or not applicable. MTSBA provides programs and services that meet the needs of its member school boards.
I agree.
MTSBA's governance structure meets the needs of its member school boards. MTSBA board and its member school boards respect and have confidence in one another. The MTSBA board and its member school boards embrace the philosophy of each child in every public school.
I agree.
MTSBA facilitates open and candid communication among its members.
I agree.
MTSBA's communications are effective in assisting me in a respective, in my respective position.
I agree.
Any other comments? Okay, strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree. The MTSBA board and staff provide strong leadership support of elected school board governance with the goal of developing the full potential of each child.
I agree.
More enthusiastic, less enthusiastic, or no change. In reflecting on all of your interactions with MTSBA over the last year, are you more or less enthusiastic about your school district's membership in MTSBA than you were before the year began?
More.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Great job.
Okay, this is me, 4.04. My schedule's just crazy, and I don't like missing these meetings. We have our regular scheduled meeting, the first one on March 10th. I won't be back in state till the 11th, so I'd like to move it to Wednesday, March 12th, same time. So.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves, to move the regular board meeting on March 10th, 2025, to Wednesday, March 12th, 2025. Okay.
Okay, a motion and second. Any public comment on this agenda item? You guys all good with that? Uh, any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you guys. 4.05.
So, recommended action for policy 84. Let me see, the 26, yes, 8426, 8426F for the use of therapy animals in school. This is our secondary, right? Yeah. It's a secondary. So we already had the service animals, the therapist was the one we're missing, so we needed that one, and I didn't have any other input besides what we talked about last time, so.
I did reach out.
No, yes, we did. I just remembered that.
I did reach out to our insurance people. They were basically not a lawyer, can't provide legal advice, or even confirm the intent of MTSBA policy language. So they wanted to check with Tony, and then we didn't hear back from Tony. He said, however, I can address the insurance requirements and how that may impact the district. The policy appears to only require proof of liability coverage from a handler and does not require that they name the district as an additional insured, nor does it outline what limits should be required. It does not appear that this would waive the district of any liability as you would still be responsible for an employee injury under your workers' comp coverage, and a student could still choose to name the district as a defendant in a lawsuit. Without the handler's liability policy naming the district as an additional insured, there would be no coverage afforded to the district under this policy. He's copying Tony on the response. That a handler be required to name the school district as an additional insured on their liability policy as an additional layer of protection for the district. These requirements are outlined in our facility use agreement that we do use, and we make them do that. He said that may be appropriate in this situation as well to help minimize the district's exposure. There really is no way to get around the workers' comp exposure either. If an employee is injured in the course and scope of their employment, then it will be a workers' comp matter. However, they could still choose to bring a third-party claim against the handler as well. That's all I really got back. I checked, Great Falls had this policy, not very many people do, but they had it and they didn't put any kind of limitations in there. They left it just as model policy, so.
So really, we could take, take that and put it into the form, the use form that you were talking about, instead of putting it into policy and actually bring it in that way if we wanted to. Or, I guess it would be up to you, I mean, for that use policy, what, what the level of insurance it would, it would require.
Is that the same one where?
I think so. I think that's, that was that same one.
We found that million dollars.
Yeah, we require for the facility use agreement that it's a million dollars, that someone has to hold insurance, and then they have to name us as an additional insured on there.
Right, and it's at your discretion.
Yeah, I did say that too.
So really, I mean, that's, that's the limit that we, I mean, that you, you have discretion to go up to a million dollars.
Right, yeah.
And then anything else that would have to be something separate.
Yeah, Brittany found that on the form, for that fault for facilities use in the application, yeah.
So that, if that's the case, I mean, I think it covers everything then.
Do we want to add that limit to the form?
It already has it on the form. Oh, on, on, is that?
Using the same wording.
Proof of licensure, copy of insurance. Doesn't come with language.
It does not have the language.
Form that we're talking about does.
That's a facility use form.
Right.
This is the actual district request to use therapy animal in school.
I think that language should be added to that form.
I do too.
I like that.
I do too.
And I think that cleans everything.
Same language over.
Yeah.
So, it says, copy of an insurance policy that provides liability coverage for the work of the handler and the therapy animal while the two are on school district property. And then what's the language for the facility use?
Hold on.
And I don't believe on the facility use one that we clarify that they have to have us name as an additional insured. I can't remember, maybe when you find it, you'll see that, but our insurance requires it anyway, so I make everybody redo it if it's, if it doesn't say that.
I think we have to put that in there.
4330 is the policy.
And then 4330, yeah.
Yeah, 4330 affects the language on that application.
The requesting organization or individuals shall provide the district with a certificate of insurance prior to the use of the facility. So that kind of already says that with that other one. The certificate shall show coverage for comprehensive general liability insurance in an amount not less than one million dollars for injuries to or death of any person or damage or to or loss of property arising out of in any way resulting from the described use of the facility, or just, we can just say from the therapy animal or something.
I think, I think in that, in the policy, it has a paragraph saying that they hold, they indemnify the, the school and hold them fallist.
Yep.
So, maybe we add that paragraph to it.
Yeah, those clauses usually don't hold up, I mean.
No, generally don't. I mean, you can put anything, but they generally don't.
I don't think it would be bad to add that to the, to your policy part under insurance, not just on the form, because there is a spot for it.
Okay. Let's.
So, we would, so, we would require us to be listed as an additional insured, million dollar comp and general liability, or.
One million dollars.
Comprehensive general liability.
For injuries to or death of any person or damage to or loss of property.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that would be on this service animal policy. We're gonna add it to.
Therapy animal.
Yep. Therapy animal.
Yeah, I think we should put it in the policy and on the form, and then we can add that. Don't hold this, the liable clause into the policy too. Did you find it, Wade?
No, 4330 doesn't have it. I thought it did right there. Oh, it's, it's actually in the form. It's under the insurance indemnification clause on 4330.
Oh, yeah, okay. Requesting organization or individual by signature below hereby guarantees that the organization shall indemnify, defend, and hold harmless the district and any of its employees or agents from any liability, expenses, costs, including attorney fees, damages, and/or losses arising out of injury or death to any person or persons, or damage to any property of any kind in connection with the organization's or individual's use of district facility.
Change that to use of therapy.
Okay, so let's just take those two paragraphs.
Add them to the.
Add them to the policy and the form, or just the form?
That, that's just on the form. I didn't see it in the policy at all for 4330.
But Brittany said we should, it wouldn't be bad to do it both, right?
I don't think it would, but you have a place on there for insurance on both of them.
Okay, so let's just take those two paragraphs.
I like that, because when we read that policy for the facility, it kind of threw us at first, you know, because it had to go to form.
Yep.
Okay. Those two paragraphs will go onto the policy and the form, but anywhere where it says facility, we'll obviously change it to be therapy animal. And then it'll have to come back for another reading? Or do we, can we just pass it like that?
Just be as.
Okay.
No, yeah, Second Amendment.
Okay. Is everyone good with that?
Yep.
I like it, I think it cleans it up a lot.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the recommendation to add policy 8426 and 8426F, request to use therapy animal in school, on the second and final reading as discussed.
Second.
Okay, Wade. Okay, a motion and second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. 4.06.
Okay, I've got some recommendations from MTSBA, some policy updates or changes. So again, these are recommendations. First one is personal conduct, 5223. And on this one, they have deleted a line under firearms. I'll read the first part. For purposes of this policy, non-firearm weapon means any object, device, or instrument designed as a weapon or through its use is capable of intimidating, threatening, or producing bodily harm, which may be used to inflict injury. So then the line that was, was struck out, actually the example, so then sometimes these get difficult because they're naming things and you miss things, so what they recommended is to take it all out, or said including but not limited to. And you felt those things before, those things change, and it gets kind of tricky, so. That's what they recommended there.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the first reading of policy 5223, personal conduct.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next one, 5334, vacations. They're just an addition to this policy recommended, and so they're just saying that the superintendent will, will, shall serve as the head of the employing agency as set forth in section 218617, and shall be responsible for providing reasonable opportunity for employees to use rather than forfeit accumulated vacation leave. So they haven't really changed the policy, they've just stated it more clearly, who does it, so.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the first reading of policy 5334, vacations.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, one more. 3416, it's administering medications to students. They crossed out a line, except in an emergency situation, only a qualified healthcare professional may administer a drug or a prescription drug to a student under this policy. So they've left it as, let's see, the next part probably is all you need to do. Diagnosis and treatment of illness and the prescription of drugs are never the responsibility of a school employee and should not be practiced by any school personnel. I'm not exactly sure if you need to cross it out or not, but they're just saying it's recommended, kind of simplifies this policy also.
What if you have like an emergency inhaler situation?
Most of those kids self-administer on that anyway?
Yeah.
Like if you're having like a.
What about Narcan?
Or like an EpiPen.
Narcan, we have.
Well, I don't think Narcan is considered prescription.
Yeah, it's not.
Right? If you're having a.
This is a prescription.
These are prescriptions.
A drug or a prescription drug.
But, I mean, I think it's a similar thing that happened in the last policy though, where it's, I mean, it's just striking out the specifics and not getting rid of the intent.
Right.
Who would administer?
But Narcan then.
Should be the school nurse.
It said are never.
I think that's, no.
No, there's other people that are certified.
They're certified.
Going through that training issue, yeah.
So does that fall under this or no?
Think of it, it's a considered a drug.
It should fall underneath this category, along with your EpiPens. I think EpiPens and Hammers, they usually have that permission to self-carry.
And really, it's covered under.
We're not like a diabetic.
Right. Good point. Jen, did you have something you want to say?
I did.
Yeah.
On the fourth page, it does talk about, the district may maintain a stock supply of opiate antagonists to be administered by a school nurse or other authorized personnel or other authorized personnel to any student or non-student as needed for an actual or perceived opioid overdose. A school that intends to obtain an order for emergency use of an opioid antagonist in a school setting or related activity shall adhere to the requirements in the law. And this does address any, like, the glucose that we would need to administer, any self-administering of medications. Like, we have all the forms filled out and the policy here does state that if we do administer it, that we have to call. Um, I can't remember where I read it. It says on the first page, line, or twenty-six, starts emergency administration of medication. So it says, in the event of an emergency, a school nurse or trained staff member exempt from the nursing license requirement may administer emergency medication to any student in need thereof on school grounds, in school building, at a school function, or on a school bus according to the standing order of an authorized physician or a student private physician. In the event that emergency medication is administered to a student, the school nurse or staff member shall call emergency responders and notify the student's parents or guardians. A building administrator or school nurse shall enter any medications to be administered in an emergency on an individual student's medication record and retain the documentation. So if anything is administered, like, we put it on infinite campus, anytime we give medication to students, it's logged and then usually even Tylenol and Ibuprofen, if a student doesn't have that already, the school nursing staff that was authorized to give it, they're calling parents and saying, hey, can I give so-and-so medication? Because this is what they're saying it is. And then, even if like you notice a kid comes up every single day, I think there might be something more going on is what the school nurses have been doing. If it's like Tylenol or Ibuprofen, because it's not very often that you need it every single day or multiple times a day. And it does say, even like an inhaler, the students have to fill out a form to carry those.
Good.
Yep.
Yeah, it just kind of, I don't know, cleans it up a little bit. Even lines twenty-eight, allow for all what Jen's saying, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, they all do.
Okay. Yep. And then can we clean up the spaces on that? Between pages five and six? I don't know what happened there, but it's.
And page six is.
Yeah. Okay. I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the first reading of policy thirty-four sixteen, administering medications to students.
Second.
Okay, one more second. Any fellow comment on this agenda item? Any further board? We're good? Wade?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
All right, with that, we're moving to our work session. Transportation and facilities. We'll go to you first, Rob. I know you're chomping at the bit.
Don't have much. We've been pretty busy. Snow. Dealing with cold. And everything comes cold, but we're pretty good here, so.
I was gonna say, I thought this year was a little bit.
Nothing froze?
Nothing.
It's just.
It's like forty-five degrees out, you guys.
We're in the flood now.
Yeah.
Dealing with bad cold. There's a lot of vines in that bank. It makes things tough.
Yeah.
We had to hire ponies to dig out a coal bin to get rocks that were on top of our auger and stuck in our auger. Second time this winter we've had to have that. Well, it was low enough, we did it ourselves the first time, but it's a lot of work because we have to hand-feed the boilers every thirty minutes when it's that cold and it takes all four of us hours to get something like that done. It's what it is. Driving bus.
You're driving two routes a day? Like, we were doing the morning and the evening route?
Yeah. Year dawn.
Right.
It's a lot of time.
Yeah, it's a lot of time.
And it's a short, we were in Wyoming last weekend. They've up there thirty, but we still aren't getting anybody to fly. I mean, there's just the people. Yeah.
It's not the willingness.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a, it's a specific group to drive a bus. It breaks up your day and everybody's struggling. I mean, great balls, I talked to somebody there, they're the same.
Other than that, I got working on work orders, getting those done. Taking care of a few things on the first maintenance list. I got CEI coming in to do some things hopefully next week or two. I'm gonna have them come in and train us on how to rewire the dim lights so we can put in the LED bulbs so we don't have to call them every time.
Hmm, good.
We used to do it with the old bulbs, but different now, so I want to have them train us so we can just do it now.
Thank you, Robert. I was just looking for that since we're still on facilities. Just trying to find that email from. Right there. From Tyler. I was gonna forward it to the rest of the board to look at it. I had a phone call with Tyler today and I spoke with Wade too. Right afterwards, he's got some figures and stuff put together. I'd like to see you guys look over that, but I think we need to get, Tyler wanted, he expressed to me he wanted to come down.
Yeah, he had his partner Bob was supposed to come down last week. He touched his base off and on. Yeah.
Anyway, Tyler wants to come down. I told him I'd have you scheduled a meeting to get him down here. Wade expressed the only day that didn't work for him was Thursday this week.
So unless they wanted me in a dentist office.
Not really. I do need to go, but it's probably not. I'm trying to. I find that provisional that he sent us the.
Yeah, he sent us a couple of, and it's, you guys need to look it over.
Do you want to highlight some of the?
Here it is. Go ahead, Wade.
Sure, so let me.
This one.
Are you gonna forward that to us?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't have it yet.
I haven't forwarded it yet.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to.
You said you're going to, which I thought meant now.
I had to find it first. I wanted to make sure it was the right one.
So. So we walked through each one. Well, we walked, we talked about these in Mr. Trembo's office and then went and walked quite a few of them. And kind of went through what his thoughts were on, you know, possible solutions and things and and he had some solutions that were, you know, creative and different and, you know, could work. But just highlighting the big ones, the ones I've been talking about for quite a while. So the restroom renovation at the high school, he's got a budget of six hundred and fifty thousand on that. The sports complex renovation would be four point five million, which is about half of what we thought it was.
Mm-hmm.
And so that'll be something we'll just kind of pick his brain and see why.
That's less than.
That's when, when I opened this email, I didn't want to question Tyler without Tyler being here. But I was kind of like, whoa, are you sure about this?
Yeah.
I wanted for that for.
And reading through, he's got comments on there or notes on there and reading through the notes, it's everything we talked about. So, I mean, unless he doesn't, you know, there was something that was misconstrued or whatever.
Right, as he said right in the notes, it's, the renovation includes the demolition of the existing, the precast stands, the concrete slabs, all new aluminum seating with pre-assembled crow's nest, storage needed for under bleachers, track surface replacement, field leveling and repounding concessions renovations include a changing area for referees. I mean, he's got everything we've talked about. But see, when I talked to SDI, they had told us, I wasn't here, but I was at that conference and I listened in. And when I talked to him on the phone, well, that's high.
Oh.
So I think with Tyler too, that was high bids or high estimates. So, because it seemed like Tyler and I talked on the phone too again. We've had some phone conversation. I talked to his partner twice, trying to get a date set up. I don't know what Robin is from, but I know I was sick last week.
Bob isn't his partner. Bob works for Montana School Equipment. So he came down and went through the auditorium, but they're working together.
Oh, great.
So Robert's one that took him through, but I talked to him today and he said he should have some quotes here in the next couple of days and then he asked me some questions.
The only other difference really that we've talked about when it comes to that complex, we really, we referenced a lot of the Baker.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, he's looking more at the Red Lodge.
Oh, that one's really nice.
I don't know if you guys.
That one is very, that one is nice.
He was basing that off of that in a short conversation I had with him weeks ago, it was like, that's gonna be cheaper than what Baker did. I mean, Baker's is great, don't get me wrong. Everything's on one level.
Red Lodge is nice.
Red Lodge is next too, so.
I just asked Wade about.
Yeah, but.
I just asked Wade about bathrooms. Because that wasn't on there, Wade said.
It's not on the, the.
So that's something that we need to
Yeah.
address. That's why I think it's better off we get Tyler down here. And with these preliminary numbers, with the short conversation I had with Wade, if we can get him down here, hoping that first week, that first meeting in March, if we have to add that, right, then we're we're already way further ahead than that we're maybe.
Yeah.
Anyway, so that gives us an opportunity to.
And that's with like everything that we've asked to redo, everything that we want to update.
I'll send it to you guys. Right, so. So you, there's a this culture bond project list twenty-twenty-five. So when we went through this, and I think we talked about it last time, about how the bond has to be used within the first, or within three years. And so we took some of the, the some of the projects off of that list because they were, you know, year fifteen to year twenty, whatever it was. And then there were also some that we talked about, like the data hub, where Evan talked to Range and talked to close to you, oh, just to Tyler. And it's an easier fix than what we had, what we thought. And so so it was, it got removed from this because it was not this type of a project. You know, and so there are some of those that did get pulled off this list and you'll see that in that email.
Yeah, we learned a lot. We walked around all three schools and he got with Evan about all this. That was a good. Good meeting.
So he's gonna go again to each school?
No.
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 Right.
We just seen it down. It doesn't have to be when he, yeah. I'd like them to get down here next week, this week or next week if they can, with Wade and Scott just took over a few of these things. And then I'm hoping that by that first meeting in March, he can really, this is what we're doing.
At the board meeting?
At the board meeting.
Good.
And do we know how much, how much detail we've got to have to put in for that bond?
Yeah, yeah, you have to have like, you know, you have to have what the project is. You have to, you know, I don't think you need like details like we're doing the crow's nest and we're doing this, but if you have like the sports complex and you have to have, you know, the amount, of course. But I don't think it's like detailed detail, but you have to have every project separate.
Yeah, he's got it all separated out by priority too, so.
Cool.
No, he's, they've done a lot of work, so.
And also that bond lady is happy to zoom in on any meeting that you guys request and talk to you guys and be able to explain it a lot better. So you guys just give me a heads up of a meeting you want her to do and she's.
That might be helpful on that first board meeting. I mean, that'd be good.
The first one.
Yeah, we just rescheduled.
For the twelfth?
Twelfth. Twelfth.
Because if we can get that, I mean, get that done as soon as possible and get that in and then get that public notice, everything else, and then, you know, go out for bond as soon as we can. Maybe we could get design work done by the end of this football season, get in there and actually do the work.
Start.
Be exciting.
It was all good news. It was just, I wasn't expecting to hear back from him this year.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
He had a lot of our districts figured out though.
Yes. With that, what's your soul?
Hey, just a few things. First of all, just to give a little synopsis of the tournament that occurred last weekend. From a business perspective, I will unqualified, or I will without qualification say we do admit her. And that's gonna be a topic of discussion. And I think that's something that, I don't think that their facility is as large as ours. I don't think that their organization was as good as ours. And I just overall don't think the experience was the same as the experience that we have here. The one thing they have is billing is twenty minutes away. And that's really the one advantage they have over us. And we're gonna have to see how that plays out. There was discussion of doing it on a rotation in the future. I think we need to look at doing it next year here with the same grounds that we did it with there. They raised the all-season or the all-session passes by eight dollars for this last tournament. And so that's gonna skew the profit line, but just based off the first two days and the pre-sales, we were about four thousand dollars better than them in ticket sales. And that's before we look at concessions and all of that. I think when you're spreading that money out amongst the entire conference, then you're going, you know, I think that's gonna sway people and their thoughts on that. The teams themselves, I think, did fantastic. Our boys and our girls, they represented the school extremely well. The boys came so close in both of those games. It was really heartbreaking and the girls came to within, you know, within a game of going to divisionals. Again, very proud of all of them and the coaches in giving them to do that. We'll be having the all-conference meeting here tomorrow at ten AM. So that, again, what the future of the tournament is held is gonna be up for discussion there. They also discussed the volleyball rotation at our meetings and basically it's Baker, or for districts, it's us, Baker and Huntley. Lodge Grass has the facility for it, but they don't have the infrastructure for it. So for the time being, it's going to be us three with volleyball. If we do get the track done, we would definitely be a player for district track tournaments as well. We could probably get into a rotation with Baker on that. So that's another plus on that side. It's another thing that's gonna help bring in support to the community. Let's see. I would really like to say thank you to Don Edinburgh, Don Herden, Candace Angel, Tony Helmer, all the coaches and all the community members who have stepped up to keep our transportation on the road. They, we were able to get the kids to and from the tournament without having any white buses or submarines driven. And we've been able to support Bart with swimming and we managed to send Alicia Science Kids to Wyoming on Thursday. So, you know, they're pulling, they're pulling more with their weight. We're ants that are doing mighty things right now. Also, I'd like to thank, thank Hitme for being our eyes on the road down there. Yeah, no, and it is a huge help. Getting those phone calls from outside, you know, without having to physically drive down and see what it's like. Like, I don't think it occurred to any, I know it didn't occur to me that, hey, the snow is melting. Cow Creek and Rosebud Creek are gonna flood. You know, didn't occur to me. But yet that was something that we had to take into account and, you know, we'll probably have to take into account for the next few days. So thank you very much for that. And, oh yeah, Trey and Tiana have also done their part in driving to and from events, getting sure, getting the band and the cheerleaders there to support everyone. We are ready now for track and field and golf and already doing our master schedules for next year. For football, this is kind of interesting. We are playing Thompson Falls. MHSA is, in their wisdom, yeah, chosen to schedule two teams that are almost as far apart in the state as you can get. So.
Are we going there or are they coming here?
We are, we're meeting out.
Oh.
We are meeting in the middle. So right now, I've already begun talking with their, with their athletic director on that and the plan right now is to meet in Manhattan. The problem with that is going to be that, you know, it's kind of close to Bozeman and there's a Cats game that Saturday and it is a home game. So that could put lodging at a premium anywhere within, you know, a hundred miles of Bozeman.
Preserve it right now.
Yeah, that's honestly, that's, you're not, you're not far off. But yeah, so I mean, it should be interesting and fun. They're taking the lead on getting the facility and everything because they had to do this last year. And so they're, they'll do the home side of it this year and then when we flip next year, we'll do the home side of it and figure out where we're gonna be. But yeah, that should be fun. You know. The basketball, was that?
Equally likely next year.
Equally, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'd rather play. But the basketball master schedule just came out as well. So we should get the dates on that pretty well hammered out for next year. And we're also gonna talk about volleyball for next year tomorrow within the conference. As far as the awards. As far as the awards, uh, we, we've been with all the stuff that's been going on between weather and sports and school. We, it, it's been difficult to try to set a date for that. So now that we can actually breathe a little bit, uh, we're gonna set a date to do an in-school ceremony for the fall and winter sports, to, to pass out the letters and stuff and get that done. You know, buses are on the road and running, they're getting dirty, the drivers are working, every one of them is appreciated, including Robert, and I'm sorry I didn't mention you, but thank you for all that you do, everything you do. It is greatly appreciated. I can't say enough about that. So, uh, we're doing the best we can with what we got. We did have an applicant that uh, had all of his C D L stuff done. And my understanding is he did come in and do an application. And I will have to follow up on the status of where his application is at. But hopefully we can get him on board. Anthony should be coming off of his, his hiatus, his medical leave in, I think, three or four weeks now. So, you know, we'll hopefully have some relief on the horizon.
Thank you. For maintenance?
I don't, I really have anything new on this. I guess the um, what I'd ask all of you is um, that, that tab that um, that is, I mean, it's got the doors and the smaller projects on there, um, is what would you like to do with that? Would you like to put, just put those in case and just be, have them be, you know, their own individual projects in there and then?
They go in a case, do, is there a budget for doors?
I was just gonna say it cause it kinda leads into your case report. If those in the case, what I, what, what can we do, not only as a board but as a district to help? Do we, you need some, do we need a door guy to come down here and just give you a, or, or are you gonna order them up? What do you think? What, what do you wanna do?
I guess it would just depend on budget. Cause you're looking at without shipping eleven to thirteen hundred dollars a door. I think there's thirty-six doors on that list.
I would think, what I'd like to see you do is pick the first five that have to be done. Submit a.
My other question is, beans, we're covering windows and stuff. Do we have to have windows in the doors? Cause that would save us about two hundred dollars a door.
You need to be able to see.
You have to have, don't you?
You have to be able to see in.
Yeah.
You shouldn't have the whole door or the whole window covered for safety. That's the procedure. I know what he's saying, but somewhere you gotta be able to see it.
Are there windows next to the door?
If there's windows next to them, somehow you have to have it in the room.
Okay, if there's, if there's a window next to the door that you can see in the room, then I don't think the door has to have a window. And that's cheaper anyway, yeah.
Or see out of the room.
Both ways.
Where we cover it all.
They're not covering the top.
Yeah, we did, we did solid on the bottom and the door because the teachers, it's hard for them to cover that door. Like if there was an emergency. And then um, I think we, I haven't talked to Ashley yet, but I have to revisit the gym doors just because of during tournament for people coming in and out, we might have to change those, but, and then um, there's a safety grant we're gonna work on that's hopefully gonna pay for all that. And then um, we'll replace, most of the teachers have curtains over the top part of their window. But it's hard to cover that bottom part, so we put the solid stickers in the bottom too. And then we'll just make sure everybody's got matching curtains and settle all the things. She got fancy belt. I don't know if she showed you Steve, but you just had to switch a button.
Oh, it's fancy.
Yeah, but she saw the cost.
It's pretty cool stuff though. It's hit a button, it goes from clear to.
It was awesome.
Does that have to be like wired in?
Yeah.
That's what we did.
With batteries?
Yeah.
How does it work?
Yeah.
I don't know. I showed her to show me a cost. She showed me the thing. I was like, oh, that's really cool. What's it cost? I said, no. It just, the sheer amount of windows in the three facilities, it would be a.
Yeah.
It's amazing. Don't get me wrong. And I think as this technology progresses, it's gonna get cheaper and cheaper because they're already using it. And there's, she's shown me, she's working me. I'm not paying attention, but. There's other companies that are doing it. I mean, it's, it's great, but right now it's, it's pretty expensive. It would take a uh, a grant to do that. Of course, it would be in the, the hundreds of thousands to do that to all the windows.
And I've done it so many different ways. I may really have done it with the magnets. I've done it with Robin was saying where you'd pinch the top part and then all you gotta do is open the top part. So you gotta be able to see in and out. Um, all the Alice procedures, the new procedures after Columbine, they'll, they'll teach you all that, um, tell you all that same kinda stuff. I've used the ones with the, the plastic. I've used the ones that you hit the button and it goes up and down. But yeah, they're way more expensive. And you can do the magnets with the cloth. Robin and I were just talking about that this morning. And you can just literally leave it down and as soon as it's locked down, it just, you just pull it up like that. And I had a teacher make those years ago, still.
This stuff that Robin was talking about, it's a film, a clear film that goes over the top of the window, on the window. And there's either a remote or there's a button on the window. You just push and it just makes it blurry.
Yeah.
You can't.
Is it a gap that comes up?
Yeah, I need to know how that works.
Yeah, I've just seen the plastic that doesn't let you see in, but you can see, or like we can see out, but they couldn't see.
Yeah, this stuff, that's just, it's completely, you can't see in and out.
And it's true, as long as it's energized, it's clear. Cause that way, I know somebody asked about, does it operate on electric or batteries? It's, the, the clear state is energized, so if you lose power, it goes blank. Yeah, it, it adds that layer of safety to it.
It's, it's pretty amazing stuff, but like I said, it's pretty new. Way here. Yeah. We'll be in a while.
Yeah.
So anyway, back on those doors, Rob, that's what I say. Pick your five that need to be done. In your head, what's your priority? Just get them ordered. We'll just start, submit it to Scott and Brett and.
They'll probably do new hinges and door handles on them. Whether from a pivot, cause they're basing out the old round ones and putting the more eighty-eight compliant ones on them.
Don't you disagree? We'll just start knocking that out, just five at a time.
Yep.
Okay, then I have one more question. I guess maybe Wade, the activity doors at the middle school, door seven that are on that list. They're on there to be replaced. Was that cause they're older than the rest of the doors or?
At the middle school?
Middle school.
Those are the ones between, or no, those are the ones outside.
Replace outside door number seven on line sixty-two.
I, I'm not sure, honestly, because I, I've uh, I pulled all of that off the old different maintenance list.
I had a conversation with Lucius earlier today and we don't want to know why they're on there.
Yeah, and they.
If that's the case.
Take them off.
Take them off.
And I think before putting these all in case.
Yeah.
Make sure, yeah.
Yeah, I, I noted next to it what to do with those, sorry.
Here it is.
Okay, so that one, that one doesn't have anything, okay, so.
Am I looking at the wrong cap?
This was ten, seven, eight, and nine. Yeah, so it's this one.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
So, but there are some on there that, that we'll just wipe off there because they're, um, they're done.
Done.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I just haven't, haven't had time to get back in there and do that.
I know I've said it before, but you need, with everything else you got going on, you need somebody to come in and take care, take care of some of the stuff. Just get it done.
We, we, we are, I mean, just scheduling them.
Right. Good. Good.
I have a question on two items, one on the maintenance, one on the capital projects. On the maintenance tab for P P E S, it's on line seventy, the intercom not working in the gym. I'm just curious if that is a current one or an old one? Cause Bart and I, he showed me a few spots in the gym and cafeteria that um, are not as strong, but it was mainly cafeteria that we saw. So is there a backstory to the gym at Pine View? Do you know one, Bart?
Oh, it's just all that, I originally had thought all of those speakers that are in the ceiling were part of that system of which we've set, discovered they're not part of the current system. Such old ones.
Yeah. That's, it's an old um, uh, media.
Oh, is it?
For what he called it, just music and microphone system, like we had here at the high school. So we found it, it's, it's lodged in the cinder block wall in the music room. It still works, it's just very old and might not work, you know, great sound quality is probably why it was abandoned. But all the speakers in the ceiling from the music room down to the cafeteria are for that old system that was abandoned.
So really, everything, everything's working as it should, just not that, those are not part of.
It is not adequate the way it is. I can't hear, um, Evan had talked at one point, I think, about maybe trying to tap into those speakers and see if you could connect them to that system. And I mean, that would probably solve the problem if that was. Yeah, if we do some creative wiring, we might be able to uh, pull Mrs. Doll's, one of her speakers, intercom speakers and like just hack it into the old system since it still powers on. But that's more of a creative project, not a, you know, industry standard fix.
Did you chain all the other ones?
In the gym, there's, there's two bullhorn intercoms that work with the intercom system. I mean, they're, you can hear things, but I, I, with kids are running around and a lot of noise, it's probably not uh, best sound quality. Um, and then the cafeteria, maybe replacing that one's uh, wall speaker with something like the bullhorn um, style that's in gyms. Our, our, the vendor that has been handling a lot of our intercom stuff, uh, I think could install one for us, but it's just, it's not a great solution for those two areas just because it's so sound, it's like noise heavy, kind of students right there. But there might be a way just to increase the, the volume for those two speakers. Cause they work, they're just, the sound needs to be answered. So that's good to know for that one. Um, and then on the capital project, there's one on line twenty-seven uh, for the intercom system that that needs to be replaced. I'm kinda thinking this is an old one because last spring, we did replace the intercom system uh, for Pine View. And it's been, it's probably been on the, on the agenda for a long time to do that. But it, it failed last year, some critical parts of it failed and there was no fixing it. It was, it was like a twenty-five-year-old system that, that then they just had to replace it. So there's still some parts on that that could be improved, like getting a new master clock for that system. Uh, but the intercom itself has been upgraded uh, to a new system and it's working uh, really great compared to the old one.
And I, I do wanna say that, that um, the capital projects, that list has been um, modified. And that's what Tyler actually sent in, in the email that, that he sent back to us with the, the quotes that he's got. So, and that one, I believe is, is just off, it has been taken off clearly, so.
So soon we can just get rid of this.
Weight stake, yeah.
And have the case reports.
Case report.
And our capital improvement plan.
Yeah.
Great.
We're, we're in that direction. So, all right, with that, we'll move on to six point oh one. Policy forty-three twenty.
Yeah, you missed.
I think we've covered that.
Well, the year-to-date is only like January. I was wondering if we could run that school year-to-date?
Yeah, we, we can. I, I realized that. That's the built-in year-to-date formula for case, which is just calendar year.
Since with that case, it's like one thousand and eleven. Like two years.
And then is everybody, I know Evan's been doing a lot of work on making sure it's more user-friendly.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Is it working better on your side?
Yes. Thanks for the nice job. Thank you, Evan.
And then when you close a ticket, are you requiring that there's a note put in before it gets closed? Cause I think that would be really beneficial. Instead of just closing, just even quick note of what you did. That way if it gets reopened, the principal can see, you know, oh, I have to reopen it. We know this was already fixed. Maybe we need to try something else next time. So I think that will help communication flow both ways if you could just quick note, close it. Okay?
Is there a spot to do that, Evan?
Yes.
Okay.
Evan requires his people to do that.
Play it for Evan.
But he, but Evan's people are trained to use it and I don't think, you're doing everything by yourself, right?
And we're at a computer more often.
Yeah, yeah. So it doesn't have to be like elaborate, but just little note, close it.
Is there a way that, that he could take a picture and then just pop that in as a note?
Yeah, you can add pictures to the comments if that's what you mean, like.
I mean, would, would that be helpful to just, okay.
I was gonna say.
I mean, we all know Robert is a man of yours.
Picture of Robert's face.
Done, done.
Speaker before, speaker after.
Robert is not amused.
Maybe he could put like audio notes in there.
That would be even better.
Inappropriate. Now, when you move on, okay. Six point oh one, policy forty-three twenty. Who wants to start?
I, 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 I don't mind starting. I, I, um, so during, during senior night, the other night, um, when, when the microphone was passed to a non-school employee, um, a lot of things go through my head. I mean, just because I've been through litigation so many times. And, and I, I just thought, if, if that non-employee says something that is not, basically he's, he's acting as a, an agent of the district when he has that microphone. And I thought, that's a pretty dangerous situation um, for, for us as a district. Um, and so that, that made me nervous um, when, when he just um, went on. I, I love the ceremony, whatever. But that made me nervous regardless of, of what it was, is, is having it, someone who, who cannot be held responsible, taking responsibility for the district. Um, and so that, I, I initiated a letter to you and to Mr. Otramba about that. Went, went through, found the policy that talks about this, that even for information, no one can use the school as a captive audience. Use the school to have a captive audience, to, to relay information. Um, and so that's kind of where I started with it, um, was, was looking at, all right, what are we opening ourselves up to at, as far as litigation goes? If we allow people who are not employees of the district to have the microphone? Which it led me back to, okay, more than likely, there needs to be training from our athletic director and maybe to our athletic director on the person who has the microphone, that is an employee of the district, has to keep control of the microphone um, during, not, not just sporting events, but, but other events too. But it, it just, it is, I mean, it was a perfect, um, you know, perfect storm at, at that senior night. And I thought, this is a little, I mean, it's, it's dangerous on the litigation part of it. Um, that, that's what made me the most nervous. So that's where I started with it, but.
All I'll say is, I got a lot of comments after that night, a lot. We can't do it. That's my stand on this. We just simply are not gonna do it anymore. I, I agree with the tradition, I agree with the ceremony, all that. That mic is not going to anybody. If we're gonna do this moving forward, the way I like to see it done is either the administrator or the A D says, these are the families that like to be recognized, they come out and then they give them time to do their, their thing. But we are not doing speeches anymore. We're, we're not. I had too many complaints, not just from locals, too many. What was it, forty minutes?
It was longer than it usually is. It depends on how many seniors we have. It's always been, for as long as I've known, um, the opportunities they give it to the families if they wanna speak or if.
the opportunities they give it to the families if they want to speak or if they want the announcer to read it. They share, they chose to have one individual speak for all of them. So if, does that mean like for redout night, when I gave the microphone to Tuff to address the crowd, that's not okay either?
If you have an approved speaker and you know what they're going to be discussing ahead of time, then that's okay. It's like an assembly. Because those are approved and you know what the message is going to be. So yes, having Tuff speak would have been acceptable because that was pre-approved and we knew what his message was going to be.
But that's gotta go through Scott for that approval. I mean, it's pretty much gotta be written down. This is what I'm gonna talk about. This is what I'm gonna say. This is how long it's gonna take me. It's gonna follow that to the T. We just can't.
I think if we, I agree with Wade that it, it opens the door for litigation. I think that it needs to be pretty black and white though. Because if you say you're gonna let one, you know, pre-approved do this, and if it goes through Scott and then the microphone is handed off, even though the messages went through Scott and Scott has approved it, what happens when they go off script? Then what?
Well, like I said, I would just prefer not.
Well.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, that, that policy, the forty-three twenty discusses that, that even in assemblies, that, that the person who invites them is the district agent that's responsible for, for that assembly. And so it, 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 it made me nervous because I thought, you know, nothing happened. I mean, it was, it was all, it was all good things that came out of senior night. But that can't just be counted on. If, if there was something threatening, something that was off-color, something that, that was not conducive of that event that was said, we would be open to litigation by every member of, of the, the audience that was in, you know, in attendance. And that's, I mean, for me, I, I just thought, man, that would be a pretty simple lawsuit to file and to win against the district.
I guess I felt like I knew what he was going to talk about and I knew him well, so I trusted him to be appropriate. And I felt like he was, and I actually got a lot of compliments on him as a nominee, so.
Well, we're not pointing blame or placing blame on anything here. This isn't the first time that the microphone has been passed out and we've caught a lot of grief. So I just think with this policy, I agree with Wade, unless it's pre-approved, I mean, I, I don't know. I just don't think it should be handed out at all. I think anything that needs to be said should be read through the administrator or the A.D. and we move on.
With the time limit set?
Yes.
Because, I mean, Baker had a long way to travel and they were here for a long, like, an hour and a half extra, pretty much. So I just don't think we should take advantage of schools that are traveling here for us too.
Yeah. It just opens a door that I don't.
It's just, I mean, it's a, it's a responsibility that I think that, that whoever has that microphone should, should take, I mean, has a pretty heavy responsibility because you, you are the agent for the district. You are representing all of us. You're representing, the, the budget that we set is set based on us trusting whoever has that microphone. And, and if, I mean, it, it just, it brought a lot of things to my mind when it was, I'm glad that nothing, I mean, that it was all good, that it was all positive, everything was, but it, it was, it just made me nervous about what could happen.
So we could get a collective statement from them and Robert could read it, right? I mean, is that what we're seeing?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Representing them, but just have someone that we know.
That, that is, that is an employee of the district.
Right, because I think it's important, I mean, there ones are important in limits, yeah.
After reading this policy, the last sentence in that first paragraph struck me. The district normally does not permit other types of contact by non-school personnel. So, and before that, it's cut and dry. It's administrators bringing in specific people for educational purposes or topics relative to curriculum. So, and if you're gonna stand on something, you gotta stand on policy, and that's the policy. So. Okay?
This is, this is already in our policy manual a little bit.
Yes.
Okay, so this is just something that we're reviewing.
With that, seven point oh one. Evan?
All right, I have much for you. My team over the last couple of weeks, we've been learning about the intercom system, fixing some speakers that have been in classrooms that are in areas that is not high volume or speakers just don't work, and we found most of those speakers that we've worked on were just disconnected years ago because maybe it was too loud in the room for previous use. And we're learning how to reconnect those wires. So Robert had some speakers that have been on my case list for a very long time. But I delayed those because I had no idea how to fix them, but we're making some progress on those now. Just shuffling some speakers from crowded areas to just other classrooms to get some sound and learning how to turn on and turn off some classroom speakers. That's been good. And then my team's been working on improving automated processes for our asset device tracking. We're geeking out on some cool A.I. tools that Google has to offer and some cool programming that we didn't realize was available in our Google products that are making some of our reporting much faster and more streamlined. And it's really just our, our business of keeping track of devices. But it's been helpful to track down at the high school Chromebooks that have been checked out for a long time. And Bill's been pretty creative in finding ways to encourage students to bring Chromebooks back, and they're bringing them back. It's great. We're getting them found.
My kids take advantage of that, I feel like, sometimes. They can tell me where it was last located on. Then I can look for it there.
A library works. That's the next.
Yeah, and we, we like, especially with the high school, we work with them if, if, I mean, we know that Chromebooks get set down and forgotten about or get swiped when someone walks away. And most of them, they're in the building, sometimes just in a classroom, forgotten about. But we've started to disable the Chromebooks that have been gone for two or three days or even longer. And the student's just saying, I'm looking for it, I'm looking for it. And this morning, one was shut down. And within ten minutes, I think, it showed up at the tech window by somebody else who had been using it. And it was just a great reminder. And we're like, oh, shoot, someone's watching. So it's all good stuff. It's just we're encouraging the students to come check it out and then just bring it back and ask for an extension if they need it. But we got a lot of Chromebooks back this week. Built and creative on using some programming.
Exactly.
Those Chromebooks, they're something that, hey, they're great. Don't get me wrong.
I'm just glad middle school doesn't take their stuff anymore.
Ah, it's all right. Got a phone call from.
Thank you.
Actually, we are too. Yeah, I just say that now, we're more than a semester in, having Chromebooks in the classroom, not one-on-one at the middle school. I mean, it's, I sometimes wonder what, what is there to fix at the middle school because there's so much of the workload has gone down because of that. It's, it's been so wonderful and my team has been able to focus on other classroom needs besides chasing Chromebooks. So I, it was a great move to put those back in the classroom.
Good. All right, thank you, Evan. Eight point oh one, strategic planning committee survey results. How do you, do you go through this, read through it? Because I'm not doing the colors. I'll just tell you right now. This is not me.
Well, I think we all, I mean, we all can review it.
Yeah. This is my advocate team, it's right on there, but they can help me interpret colors, colorblind probably. There for you guys to read, so probably looked at it already.
I mean, I feel like we were at least half, if not more, at least expected on everything. So, I mean, I feel like that's not bad.
A little close, yeah.
Yeah. Fifty-five responses, wasn't really that much, but thankful for the people that did it.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to eight point oh two, calendar update. Okay, uh, we've had, I think, five calendar meetings. And I have a point now, I brought, it was kind of two, but they're both in two parts, proposals, last Monday to the committee, and we always have quite a few people there too that contribute. So I'm gonna take from that last one and create one calendar and get it out to them before the meeting to review. And then, because they all give me cards with the input, we went through all the different topics, every piece of the calendar you could imagine. And then from that, I, I made, basically like I said, two calendars. It all had to do kind of around Christmas, how short or how long. And then from that, like, there was one A, I'd say, and one B because there is a little difference of some people with parent teachers conferences with maybe one or two sessions. So I made that first Christmas with one or two sessions of parent teachers conference. And the second Christmas, the length of that, with one or two parent teachers conferences. So then they gave me input to that, and then I'll take those and build one calendar. And then, so this next week, they'll have that a little bit ahead of time. We'll probably start meeting a little more often because we have, we have to get it to you guys in April. We should have a calendar or two from that. And then this next one, the group wants to talk about four-day week. So that's kind of, I said, you know, you guys bring the facts, and I'll put that in a reminder email to them too that, because we start with the facts of what, what calendar we're looking at, you know, what as far as hours, minutes, all that kind of stuff. And there's, there's been at least one prototype kind of built of a four-day week already. So then what we do is we go through this parallel thinking, it's called, and we look at the bright spots, the things to be critical about, to be cautious of, creative thinking, you know, how might we do this a little differently than how we feel about it. And so everybody writes down cards, gets equal say. So then that's what I compile. Most of the time, I read them right there at the meeting, just something I picked up along the way. But we're close to, like I said, hopefully getting one built out of what came from last meeting as far as kind of a traditional calendar. The cards seem to be revealing, you know, which direction we're gonna go. And then this last one's the four-day, and I don't know how many times that'll take to run it through the process, so.
I know Forsyth just approved a four-day week.
Yeah, I got told that to you last week.
Just last one, I had to do the next one.
Lundy's had one for last week, yeah.
Just did theirs.
I think they're doing it for, to try to attract more teachers. They said they've had a lot of people wanting to know if they're having a four-day week.
Somebody just went to one, I think it was.
Could have been.
Yeah.
I don't know what that was, so we'll get to that soon, turn it all back. So that's where we are.
Cool.
Get them out, do them the same as we used to do, pull everybody and then.
Well, and then we set that up with the unions last year, didn't we? To where we could, a four-day calendar could be presented and voted upon if we chose that right.
We, we put it on them to, to.
Present the one.
But it, but it was the calendar committee. It wasn't.
Okay.
They, they were just part of the calendar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not doing it. This is volunteer work. That's too much for one person to do with a full-time job.
That's right.
That's when I stepped back from it, and then it was kind of dead, so.
Well, I just want to make sure if they present a four-day week, that it's not anything that would cause a grievance or anything.
We start negotiations, so the CCA is meeting themselves tomorrow. And after that, they'll give us some dates so we can start negotiating. But I mean, if that's something we need to talk about during those negotiations too, it'll be open.
Yeah.
I think what we'll do though is we'll get those two calendars, we'll do a quick poll of the, the parents.
Community.
See what they, what they think. We're a little different than other communities, so. That's, that's always been good, but anyway, so.
Yep.
Yeah. Good enough. Thank you. Tom, anything else to add on the activity report? I know you kind of went over a lot.
I do know, like, well, with the wrestling tournament, we did, we did really well. We had three kids place in top five. They were on the podium in state. That was outstanding. And according to us, having some all-conference players tomorrow.
It was pretty cool at that all-conference tournament, or all-state tournament, that at one time was all girls on the floor.
Yeah.
First time.
Yeah.
That's a lot of bats.
Yeah, it, it's, it's an impressive side. If you've never been to it, it's, it is very impressive. And I even sent it to my friends in other states, like back in Florida, and we don't have anything like that. You know, as far as the whole parade of athletes and parade of champions, like, it's, it's a pretty big deal. Yeah. I do, and I really hate to go back to revisit it, but in, in, as far as turning the mic over, I just want to clarify for things like if we have somebody that requests to do an honor song or if we do a flag song in conjunction with the national anthem, like, where do, where do those fall into the?
Needs to be approved.
In the guidelines of the policy.
Yeah, according to that policy, it all has to be approved ahead of time.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Everybody?
All right, with that.